This meeting will be taped by Area 58. If you would join me in saying goodnight to the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to just jump around a little bit on our agenda, so we have a couple of appointments that I'd like to get out and get to first, and the first one will be Roxy the Comfort Dog. So we'll ask our town clerk and the newly appointed comfort dog to come forward and we'll have them a swearing-in ceremony. Honestly, I've never done anything like this before, so I'm really not sure what the protocol is, but...
I, Roxy, will support my officers and my community with my whole heart and soul. I promise to comfort, heal, encourage, and soothe away sadness, fear, and confusion. I offer a warm heart, tender companionship, and unconditional love. I will serve my community throughout my days to the best of my ability.
I do?
I do.
You're official.
Sit.
Ready? All right. Nice, very good. Roxy, want to get in now? Gotcha. Come on. Sit. Hi. It's all right. It's very nervous. See, it's fine. Have a good one. Thanks, Floyd. It's a joyful way to start our meeting.
I know, it was awesome.
And so the next thing I want to jump to is Thorndike Development. Boyd is around here. Okay, good. I know that your time, Frank, so we'll start with you.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Lloyd Geisinger, Thorndike Development. My attorney, Matt Lawler, is on his way from Boston. Hit horrendous traffic. He told me he should be here in about 10 or 15 minutes, but I'm certainly intimately familiar with the draft development agreement and happy to walk the board through it. I think I can answer 95% of the questions you might have, and hopefully Matt will arrive. He's very embarrassed, but it's good for him. A little bit of humility is always a good thing. So as I believe the board is aware, we have, working with Cody and Town Council, put together a draft zoning bylaw that would be submitted as several warrant articles at the town meeting scheduled for December, as well as a draft master development agreement. And these are intended to go hand in glove. So the idea behind this is that the zoning bylaw, of course, lays out the basic framework that a developer coming to the town would be obligated to comply with. The master development agreement is specific to the particulars that we have been discussing with the town and would obligate Thorndike, if the town meeting passes the zoning bylaw, to actually execute the plan and make the payments and the other obligations so that we're locked into it, and frankly, as is the town. So we both have a sense that we have a path forward, and this draft master development agreement, once the draft is finalized and approved by the board, would also be submitted at town meeting as a reference document. And I believe Matt will need to answer this question. There would be an authorization for signature, but I'm not exactly sure how that piece of it works. So at this point, I guess I would ask the board's pleasure. We could walk through the agreement, and I can summarize for you paragraph by paragraph what's in each of the paragraphs and answer any questions, skipping over the boilerplate stuff. Or I'm not sure whether the board would prefer to just ask questions if you had a chance to review it carefully. It's whatever your pleasure is.
Yeah, a walkthrough would be appreciated.
Walkthrough, okay. I think that makes the most sense.
Sure.
So everyone has a copy of the development agreement?
Right.
So the first paragraph is just an introduction that lays out the locations of the properties and the parties involved. The next three paragraphs under background does the same thing. It describes the fact that we own, that the developer owns 265 and 266, references an exhibit that's attached that shows where the parcels are. And B, under background, the agreement is entered into by the parties to establish the framework for the redevelopment of the site for senior housing, and as well as the contribution of the two parcels that we've been discussing that are shown on the plan that I brought this evening, one for the senior center, the other for the pickleball court. So it's just a recitation of what's going on and what this is all about. Paragraph C describes what is shown in more detail later in the agreement, a commitment on the part of the owners of the property, Thorndike in this case, to pay $2.6 million, up to $2.6 million in mitigation payments to the town to help fund the construction of the new senior center. So these are just descriptions of things, they're not, there are no actions that are being taken. Paragraph D describes what we've proposed to build, namely that we've proposed building 102 senior housing units located on two different parcels, along with the typical amenities that go along with that. We've agreed that to the extent that development is pursued, that we will comply with the senior housing bylaw, which is obviously a separate document. And then finally, paragraph E describes the fact that in furtherance of the foregoing objectives, the town will present certain warrant articles to town meeting, specifically the senior housing overlay zoning bylaw, as well as a rezoning of a portion of 265 on Ponsett in order to enable all of this to happen. So again, these are recitations that we really haven't gotten into the meat of the development agreement yet. We're about to. F, the development of the projects will be subject to the terms and restrictions set forth in this agreement. Pretty straightforward. G, the parties wish to enter into this agreement to memorialize their mutual understanding commitments in agreement. So just an acknowledgement that we're both doing this not under duress. The next section, master development plan and project, is strictly a description of the actual project, that there are 102 units, that the two parcels will be donated to the town for $10, one for the senior center, one for the pickleball courts. Again, this is all setting us up for the meat of the master development agreement, which really starts with item number two, labeled Town Senior Center and Pickleball Courts. So unless there are any questions so far, I will start to get into more detail, beginning with section two. 2.1 describes the estimated budget for the senior center to be $3,400,000. This is based on a fairly detailed cost estimate that Thorndike put together only as a draft to give us a framework. The senior center cost estimate is based on plans and specifications that are attached to the master development agreement and which will obligate, which will obligate the town to build those plans to those specifications irrespective of whether Thorndike winds up building it or someone else builds it. So that's an important part of this development agreement. As I mentioned before, there are two parcels of land, one to receive the pickleball courts, one to receive the senior center and its adjacent parking lot. 2.2 then describes the actions that have been taken in town meeting in the past, in which $1.7 million was allocated for design and construction of the senior center, and there will need to be a vote that's part of the town meeting reauthorizing or repurposing $1.2 million of that $1.7 million for the construction of the senior center on this property. So that will be a separate vote that will occur as part of the town meeting activities. The owners, Thorndike, has agreed to make up to $2.6 million in mitigation payments to be married with the $1.2 million, providing a total of $3.8 million, which as a number provides a 10% contingency on top of the budget that has been presented and will be attached to this development agreement. So 2.3A and B, and just A and B, then describe how this money is to be contributed to the town. So in A, the total amount of mitigation payments will equal the cost of the winning bid to build the senior center and pickleball courts, less the $1.2 million that the town will repurpose, but in no event more than the $3.8 million. So Thorndike has committed to paying up to $2.6 million in mitigation, but when the town actually puts the final plans out to bid and receives a bid from a qualified contractor, which may or may not be Thorndike, then that number will fix the amount that Thorndike is contributing as mitigation payments. It might be the 2.6, it might be 2.4, it might be 2.3, whatever that number winds up being, we will be obligated to pay. And the manner in which we will be paying it is distributed across the first 72 occupancy permits issued. The reason for the 72 is that represents the two buildings on 265 and Ponsett. Each building contains 36 senior housing condominiums, and so the payments would get divvied up across those 72. So by way of example, if the total price for building the senior center wound up being $3.5 million, that would mean that Thorndike's contribution is $2.3 million, the $1.2 plus taken away from the $3.5. And across those 72 occupancy permits, that would mean that prior to the issuance of each occupancy permit, Thorndike would be obligated to contribute $31,994 towards the total contribution of $2.3 million. So all of this is being memorialized in this development agreement, locking us in to these payments, to this program, if we are to go forward with the development of the property. In order to accelerate the date on which the senior center might get started, we're also, we've also agreed to and would be obligated, at the point that the 36th occupancy permit is issued, in other words, after just the first building, we would post a bond to the town, securing the remaining payments due, which our thought would be that that would then allow the town, since it would then know, it would have half of the money in its coffers plus the $1.2 million, plus a bond securing the last payment, it would allow the town to move forward and start construction of the senior center. Okay?
Lloyd, can I ask you?
Yes, of course.
So we can't, we can't really start any construction until you sold 36 units, is that really what it's saying?
That's right.
And do we, I mean, you know the answer to this, do we bond the project, or how do we fund that?
So we have the funding available, our portion of it, and then they would pay the mitigation payments for the first 36, and then they would provide a bond to us for the remaining 36.
Okay, so how do we pay the contractors? What would be the bond?
So we would pay it without, between our $1.2 and the 36 mitigation payments, that would give us enough to start the project.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm under 2.6 now. The town agrees to undertake the following actions necessary to complete the senior center and the pickleball courts. So this is really laying out a schedule of the actions that will need to be taken in order to move us through this process. So I'm going to actually read these. So A, within 15 days after town meeting approval of the town meeting articles, the town will retain the services of an owner's project manager to advise and assist the town with pursuit of the design, engineering, construction of the senior center and pickleball courts. B, within 60 days after town meeting approval of the town meeting articles, the town will solicit bids for the design and engineering of the senior center and pickleball courts, and diligently and continuously pursue their completion as speedily as possible. Within 60 days after owner's receipt of their first building permit for the project building, but no sooner than 180 days after the town solicits bids for the design and engineering of the senior center and pickleball courts, the town will solicit bids for the construction of the senior center. So all of this is intended to allow the process, which is a fairly lengthy process, to get from where we are to fully complete the construction documents, out to bid, receiving the bids, reviewed bids, awarding them to a contractor. The whole idea here is that this is all moving forward while Thorndike is moving forward with its construction of the senior housing, so that hopefully, at the same time that you've completed your process, we've completed that first building, and we can dovetail smoothly with the construction moving forward.
Another question, maybe, again for you. On, is 15 days, so town meeting right now is the 14th of December, so that means by the end of December, we have to retain the services of a project manager?
We may have to adjust that a little bit. The plan at this point would be to, for us to issue that procurement probably within the next couple of weeks.
What, that long?
It's done. As a matter of fact, the board already approved the procurement of the OPM, and then we went on hold because we were figuring out what we're doing. But we'll issue that, and the idea being, we have received the bids for OPMs, or we are close to receiving them, and once we have the funding available, can issue the contract to the OPM. So it may end up having to be a little more than 15, but it's in the ballpark.
But all the specifications for the project manager, we've already, we've already set those, we know what we're looking for, we just have to put it out?
We have the request for qualifications, it's done, yeah.
And how about on the second one, the design and engineering, that says 60 days?
Yeah, I mean, we'll...
I think we need that, those kind of things are somewhat detailed, right?
I think, and Lloyd, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we, so the OPM is the one that oversees that process, the procurement of those, and my understanding is Thorndike has an intention of submitting a bid for the design?
We do.
Of the building as well?
Right. We have complete in-house engineering and architecture capacity. We have a licensed senior architect on staff, and obviously, we have a tremendous vested interest in seeing this project built well, and so our plan is to be one of the bidders for that contract.
I've just been looking at the time frame here, thinking...
These are all subject to change.
So it's going to be kind of quiet time for us anyway, but I just want to make sure we...
No, they may end up changing a little bit. I mean, we're still working through some of these details, as far as specifics, but it's in the ballpark. It's aggressive, but I think it's certainly durable.
Aggressive, right.
And we're certainly, we don't feel at all locked into these dates. I think the whole notion is that we continue to move things forward. I do want to, if I may, just jump back to page two, 1.1, because I unintentionally overlooked a very important item, which is that upon the successful, upon a successful town meeting vote for the articles, and receiving the permits that we need to start the project, at that point, we would convey to the town the two parcels of land. So in the unlikely event that, for whatever reason, our project got stalled, as long as the town does its part and votes this in at town meeting, and provides us, gives us the positive vote on the site plan approval, you get the land. So you have the land in perpetuity for $10. So that's kind of step one. The mitigation payments then are step two, and those would occur as the project gets built. Okay. So jumping back to, let's see...
Page five?
Page five, thank you. Right, so we're at the bottom of page four, senior housing development, 3.1. So in accordance with the master development plan, the owners will construct up to 72 units of senior housing on the 265 and Ponsett Street property, arranged in two three-story buildings, each consisting of 36 housing units. 30 units of senior housing included in one three-story building on 266th and Ponsett, and accessory uses thereto, including at our discretion, management offices, accessory parking, a small community center, private swimming pool, health and fitness, and other amenities typical of these types of senior housing communities. 3.2, all project buildings will be constructed pursuant to the plans and specifications included in exhibit D. So exhibit D will be this plan, and so it's locking us in to building the plan that you have seen and acknowledged as a plan that you find acceptable. 3.3 is a very important section. It says that we agree that no children under the age of 18 shall be permitted to permanently reside in a unit. The way in which that gets memorialized is it would be part of the condominium documents. We've done this many times in the past, so the condominium documents will specify that children under the age of 18 can visit, visit their grandparents if you will, stay for a week or two, or even over the course of the summer, but they're not allowed to permanently reside there. It's been our experience that folks who wind up buying these homes, that's an important consideration for them as well. It's, not everyone wants to be in a all seniors community, but a lot of people do, and so the trustees themselves wind up very much enforcing this rule. And at least 80% of the units must be occupied by at least one adult who has reached the age of 55. So this is the way, this is compliant with the federal statute. The federal statute provides that up to 20% of a senior housing community can be sold to people under the age of 55. However, as long as we have the no school-aged children provision in the condominium documents, that applies to everyone. It doesn't only apply to the seniors, it applies to all condominium units. It's been our experience that these types of communities wind up being very attractive to people who are at different stages in their lives, usually single men, single women oftentimes, who enjoy the kind of safe haven of the condominium community. So this is an important part of our marketing program, and the federal government has, this is part of the federal regulations. And then we've attached, we will attach rather, a unit summary, which, of 102 units to be constructed, 33 of the units will be one-bedroom, 51 two-bedroom, and 18 shall be three-bedrooms. But again, remember, no school-aged children. So the three-bedroom units, which are oftentimes controversial, but are generally, these communities are frowned upon by the state and the federal government if we don't include any three-bedroom units. In this case, what that's providing is additional guest bedrooms for seniors when their kids visit, because the young children can't live there. Any questions on that section?
Nope.
Okay. Section four, then, mitigation. The final site plan submitted in connection with the owner's application for site plan approval, under the senior housing overlay zoning bylaw, shall include the following improvements. So these are mitigation commitments that we're making to the town. Construction of a new pedestrian crossing between 265 and 266. Construction of a sidewalk from the entrance of 265 up to the intersection of Monponsett Street and Route 106. Installation of 16 arborvitae shrubs on the property line between 265 and 254, 254 Monponsett being the condominium community immediately to the north. Installation of 16 arborvitae shrubs, at least 6 feet tall, on the property line between, oh, I'm sorry. The first one was across the street, and then the second one is with Halifax Meadows. And then, as you're, I believe, aware, this property actually has a long tail that extends to the south, most of which is weapons. So the parcel that we're looking to have rezoned is only the development parcel, which is a parcel of 12 acres of land. The remaining land in the parcel will be put into it, have a permanent conservation restriction placed on it, so it can never be developed. 4.2, in recognition of the benefit to the town of the contributed land, the town agrees that all local fees normally paid to the town in connection with the construction of the condominium project will be reduced by 50%. This was a negotiation that Cody and I had as we tried to make these budgets work, and it allowed us to make that $2.6 million commitment to the town. No other mitigation payments will be due from the owners in connection with the construction of the senior housing project. This is just saying that the deal is the deal. You know, if we need to talk about something, we want to talk about it in connection with the MDA, not get surprised six months later. And no certificate of occupancy will be issued for the last condominium building until construction of the mitigation improvements have been substantially completed, to the reasonable satisfaction of the building inspector. So that's just a protection for the town to make sure we do what we are obligated to do.
Lloyd, can I ask you a quick thing?
Of course.
4.1A, just the crossing, do you envision any sort of blinking lights, are we just talking a ground crossing, or what kind of setup do you envision there?
So we will be hiring a traffic engineer. We've already hired a traffic engineer to look at that. Those types of, we will defer to the traffic engineer and to your peer review engineer, who I'm sure will review whatever the traffic engineer comes. You know, there are thresholds that they have in terms of amount of traffic and whatnot, as to when they qualify for these types of things. Obviously, Monponsett Street is a busy street, but by the same token, if it doesn't support that type of a improvement, it's frowned upon. And I don't know the answer, but if it's appropriate, we'll absolutely install it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us, and here he is, Matt Lawler, my attorney. I told him that it was good for the soul.
Yeah. He said he's only paying half the retainer.
So Matt, I've been walking through the development agreement, and we're on section five, and I'll let you jump in. not get surprised six months later. And no certificate of occupancy will be issued for the last condominium building until construction of the mitigation improvements have been substantially completed to the reasonable satisfaction of the building inspector. So that's just a protection for the town to make sure we do what we are obligated to do.
Lloyd, can I ask you a quick thing?
Of course.
4.1A, just the crossing, do you envision any sort of blinking lights? Are we just talking a ground crossing, or what kind of setup do you envision there?
So we will be hiring a traffic engineer. We've already hired a traffic engineer to look at that. Those types of, we will defer to the traffic engineer and to your peer review engineer, who I'm sure will review whatever the traffic engineer comes. You know, there are thresholds that they have in terms of amount of traffic and whatnot, as to when they qualify for these types of things. Obviously, Mont Ponce Street is a busy street, but by the same token, if it doesn't support that type of a improvement, it's frowned upon. And I don't know the answer, but if it's appropriate, we'll absolutely install it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us, and here he is, Matt Lawler, my attorney. I told him that it was good for the soul.
Yeah.
I apologize.
He said he's only paying half the retainer.
So Matt, I've been walking through the development agreement, and we're on section five. And I'll let you jump in. All right? You can just pick it up. We've answered a few questions, but otherwise, no changes, so you want to?
You pretty much got the meat of it then, because section five, sorry, again. So Matt Lawler with Robinson and Cole. Section five is a series of general provisions that deal with sort of things that aren't specific to sort of either the particulars of the deal or the project. They are sort of provisions that you typically would find in any agreement. So things like cooperation between the developer and the town over sort of moving the project forward in general. 5.2 is a provision about successors and assigns. So the idea being that the agreement's going to be binding on owners of the property going forward. The 5.2B deals with the ability to subdivide the property. And I think the idea would be generally under 5.2B, that it would, the agreement itself and the provisions of the agreement would flow down to anybody who buys a particular subdivided portion of the 5.3 deals with notices, and so notices can be given in writing, talks about the method of the notice, who gets notice if one is sent. 5.4 is a fairly typical provision you might find in any agreement dealing with force majeure. So the ability to perform might be affected by any number of things that are sort of outside of the control of either party. And this goes with respect to things like acts of God, war, pandemic, you know, those kinds of things. 5.5 deals with default and the opportunity to cure, so a fairly typical provision. If either party does default, there's a provision for notice and then an ability to cure within some amount of time. 5.6 deals with the notion of limited undertaking under the agreement, that the idea is that the agreement sort of has a basic deal, which I think Lloyd might have talked about originally, about the rezoning and then the grant of the two parcels for the senior center and the courts. Once that rezoning occurs, the idea really is that there isn't sort of a further obligation to pursue the project. Basically, that it's not sort of an absolute, that it, once that deal is done, if the developer is unable to move forward, they don't have to, but they also don't, don't then get the benefit of the senior center and other aspects of the deal. So that's 5.6. 5.7 is a fairly typical provision about limited liability. The project's being pursued by trust, not by individuals, so there's no liability sort of on the individual owners. 5.8 deals with a stopple, so the ability of both parties to say to each other, I want to know what the status of this agreement is. So if there's any defaults under the agreement, what the agreement says, those are the sort of very typical language about being able to figure out at a particular moment what the status of the agreement is. Most beneficial probably for folks who might be purchasing condominium units or people who want to finance the project. 5.9 deals with the governing law of the project, of the agreement, which is Massachusetts law. 5.10 deals with this agreement being the entire agreement. Fairly typical provision, talks about how to amend the agreement. And so typically, that needs to be done in writing, and the idea would be that it's done by the board of selectmen on behalf of the town. 5.11 is a provision about interpretation, sort of boilerplate about capitalized terms, have the meanings that are given them. 5.12 deals with compliance. And so the town has the right to go onto the property to ensure compliance with the agreement, to the extent that they need to. And then 5.13 is talking about counterparts of signatures, that the agreement can be executed sort of in different, you can, you can sign different versions of the, or different copies of the agreement and have them all be a single form of the agreement. 5.14, it talks about no third-party beneficiaries, sort of the, the deal is between the town and the owners, and no other part, no other parties have rights on them to be respected. 5.15 deals with the term of the agreement. And key point here is that town meeting has to approve and authorize the town administrator to proceed with this agreement, to execute it. So it doesn't actually become effective until town meeting approves and authorizes. And so that's the point at which we expect that the, that the agreement be executed. And then finally, 5.16 is a, just deals with headings and says headings are inserted only for convenience. So just, just really a set of general provisions, and we could talk about any one of them, if, if there's anything that any of you saw when you were reviewing the agreement, or if you want to talk about them further. There are a set of exhibits?
Cody, I'm sorry. Would it be, just occurred to me, would it be helpful for man to walk through the zoning bylaw as well, because I don't think we did that.
Yeah, I think so. It definitely would be.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't anticipate this to be a problem, but I just think we need to think about it. We have a couple of developments in town where builders didn't complete roads and so on and so forth. Has this agreement addressed that in any fashion? Because I know you're going to make this kind of phases, right? You're going to build one building, and we want to make sure that when those occupancies permits are issued, that they have the driveways and all, so the sewer systems, all the things it's supposed to have. Is that addressed in here?
I don't think that it's addressed directly. The, the plan, I think, is not to do an actual full subdivision, but to have, there's only one sort of piece of road that gets built, which is the driveway between the senior center and the 265 developments. I mean, I don't think you'd be able to get a certificate of occupancy unless that was completed. So there's not sort of multiple subdivision roads that you're worried about sort of being done in different phases, like, and it's two buildings, so you won't get a certificate of occupancy for anything in either of those buildings unless the drive is completed.
I mean, we've run into that problem.
Yeah, no, appreciate it.
At least three or four places in town where it's a real problem.
Yeah.
So I was just, and I don't anticipate.
I think less applicable here.
I know you guys do the work, but I just want to look out a little bit for it.
I mean, we would expect and certainly be willing, and we can confer with town council and Matt and Cody, whether it's appropriate to put it in here or not, but as part of a site plan approval process, you know, that those types of concerns are addressed, that certain, certain improvements need to be made prior, you know, all improvements necessary for the health and safety of, you know, a building are completed, and we can spell all that out. We're, we're used to doing that. I don't know whether that's appropriate in here, or whether it would be part of the final site plan approval, but that's something that we could take up and address.
Again, I don't, I'm a good people, and I'm not a criticism at all. It's just that we've been burned, the town's been burned over the last 20 years on a few developments like that, where we have binder coats on a road and manhole covers that are sticking up, and we're still trying to figure out how to fix it. I just want this project to work. So.
Sure.
And you're going to go through the bylaw now for it?
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. So do folks have the copy of the draft?
We don't have it with us, but I think the audience, particularly on television, would benefit by this discussion.
Okay, yeah, sure, no problem. So the, and Lloyd, have we talked about particular motions for the, for the, okay. So the concept of the zoning bylaw amendments is sort of in three parts. The first is, and I'll get to that in a second, first is a section, a new section in the bylaw that would provide a generally applicable senior housing overlay district. So create a new district in an area of the bylaw where there currently are sort of the enumeration of all the districts in town. And then finally, we would add an additional overlay district to that sort of enumeration. That's, that's the amendments that are to section 167-4 of the bylaw. And then there are two additional portions of the amendments that are proposed, one of which would rezone the 265 property, the 265 Mont Ponce Street property, from its current zoning, which is AR residential, to be commercial and business. Okay? And then that, that would then also have the senior overlay applied to it. 266 Mont Ponce, which is the other, the other portion, the smaller piece on the other side of Mont Ponce Street, would just be given the overlay. It's already zoned, commercial business, so it would be given an overlay as well. All right, so there's three parts to the, to the amendments that are proposed. One is text, and then two amendments to the zoning. With respect to the text, the concept is that there is a senior housing overlay district, and it's an overlay that's only allowed to be imposed over properties that are in the commercial business district, and only where it's mapped. Okay, so you don't, you don't get as the owner of a property to say, I want this district to come down on your own. You have to actually go through town meeting and have town meeting map each time they want to impose the zoning overlay on your property. All right, so it's an overlay in the sense that it's, it's only adopted in situations where it's adopted on the zoning map. It is overlaid on the existing zoning. There's an underlying zoning that remains. But if you develop in the overlay, the overlay is going to control over the underlying zoning. Okay, so that's the concept. So basically speaking, the senior housing overlay district is there to allow projects that are, I think, ultimately similar to the project that's being proposed here, but would allow similar projects other places in town if town meeting so decided that that was appropriate. Briefly, to go through it, since most folks don't have it in front of them, but the, the concept then is that it's only able to be imposed on properties that are at least an acre and a half in size. So that is intending to sort of keep this from being adopted in sort of a multiplicity of places. You have to sort of assemble a parcel that's at least an acre and a half, and has at least 150 feet of frontage. All right. In the sort of, in terms of the, the actual sort of project that's allowed by the senior housing overlay, it's an, the idea is that it's a, it's an over 55 community, and the, it also allows for more than a single, it's more than single-family housing essentially. It does allow for, you know, three units per, per structure and up. So that's essentially allows for the kind of project that Lloyd is proposing, multifamily as possible within this district. That use is then allowed of right, and it's allowed pursuant to site plan review. So Lloyd was just mentioning that the use is permitted, but we also anticipate that we're going to have, to go through the 167-28 site plan review process that you already have in place. And that's a planning board process that we think is fairly well established. We expect that we would have design guidelines that would go along with that. And one of the other things that's sort of, as, as part of the specific use requirements under the proposed bylaw, is that utilities are going to be underground. So there's a handful of things that are related to sort of particular design aspects that we expect to be done through the site plan review. The next section of the, of the proposed overlay deals with density requirements. And so the, sort of the main thing to bear in mind for density requirements under the bylaw would be that there's, it's a maximum of 20 units per acre. Again, the minimum, minimum size for the, for the area of a lot has to be an acre and a half. Maximum building height is going to be three stories and 50 feet, as measured from average finished grade. And then there's a variety of setbacks, both from the lot lines and from buildings within the parcels. So you can have more than one building, but they have to be separated pursuant to the bylaw, and there are also setbacks, obviously, for the, for the sidelines. The, I think the other sort of main, sort of dimensional thing to bear in mind would be that units are required to have at least 750 square feet. So that's a key piece of the, of the, sort of a minimum unit size. There are a series of fire protection requirements that we are sort of anticipating, what the fire department might be looking for. I think those are certainly ones that we are, we are willing to, to work with them on. So there's, there's a provision that sort of deals with a variety of, of what we expect to be fire department issues. And then the off-street parking requirement that at least we proposed is a space and a half per unit. And we had a bit of discussion at the, at the bylaw committee meeting last week about this, and that's really based on the experience that Thorndike has had with their own developments and seeing what's going on with other developments, that a space and a half per unit actually is appropriate for, for a 55 and older community. But certainly something that we're willing to, to sort of back up with, with data based on what we've seen, what the developer has seen. And another provision in here includes, you know, the, the dimensions of the spaces should be nine by 18, which is a fairly standard space size. And that's really basically it. It's a pretty brief overlay. The intent is to really sort of permit, permit developments like this as a right, but subject to site plan review. And again, have overlay district concept where it can be adopted by town meeting on specific mapped areas. It's available to be sort of dropped down, but every time that happens, it has to be done by town meeting. It's not sort of someone raises their hand and decides they're going to do it. So I will stop there.
Questions from the board? You can take questions from the audience?
Sure, absolutely, however you want to do it.
Any questions? Anybody have any for either the master plan or zoning bylaw change? Oh, you did a great job explaining it, apparently, so everybody's satisfied.
That's great. So I think that, however, I'll sort of jump into this now, and then if there are other aspects that come up as we go, certainly want to take more questions. I think in terms of what we are hoping to have the board consider tonight is sort of three, three pieces. And sort of, the first one is to introduce the development agreement to the board, and have the board elect or choose to put it on the, on the warrant for town meeting. So I don't know if that's been officially done yet by the board, but that would be a request, that, that the, certainly.
On that point, do you, so do you think we have to have a town meeting vote on the development agreement?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah. We do. We think, we think town meeting needs to vote to authorize.
Okay. I didn't think so, but if you do, you're.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's certainly at least what we discussed with town council.
Okay.
That, yeah, so that is, that is the first thing. And so we want that to be on the warrant. So that would be the first request for the board tonight, is to vote to put that on the warrant. And obviously, the, the form of the agreement would be something, would be negotiated, but the final form would be available, you know, pursuant to those requirements for town meetings. That's, that's the first thing. Okay. Second thing is, hang on, one second. Second thing is, as Lloyd noted, so there's, the eligible location aspect of this is important to note. So the, under recent amendments to the zoning act at the state level, a location like this location, which is located in area, basically a set, a place where you can walk to a variety of things, either near a train station, or sort of, I think this is a very sort of relatively proximate location to lots of services. Locations like this, when you zone them for as of right multifamily, which is what this does, you can actually adopt the changes to the zoning by a simple majority, instead of the usual two-thirds majority. So that's a, that's a difference in state law that's been around about two years. And so one of the things that we want to do is ask the planning board, as part of their consideration, to say that this is an eligible location in their view. We think it fits well within what the state sees under the, under this amendment to the zoning act as an eligible location. And the second part is, the state actually makes available a process where you can get an advisory opinion from the state, to say, yes, we as, we as the folks who, who sort of administer this, agree, and we think that this is an eligible location, and then, and the town, you know, we think would have the right to proceed under this with a majority vote. That process is one that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities shepherds, and the Board of Selectmen have the ability to make that request of the state. So we'd want, if you wouldn't mind, to sort of proceed with a vote to say that we are going to make that application and authorize the town administrator to do so. And we, I don't know, Lloyd, if the, if the materials went, they went to, so Cody has the materials. So the materials, we prepared the materials, we'll work with the town administrator on putting together the application, and have, and you know, support however that works. But the idea, we're hoping to be able to get through the process with the state, to have the advisory opinion favorably, hopefully, available for the planning board hearing next month. So that's the goal. And they actually, we understand, have been turning these advisory opinion requests pretty quickly. So that's, that's the, that's the idea. So it's really three things. It's, one is to put the, put the development agreement on, on the warrant for town meeting. Two, make the request to the planning board for the eligible location. And then three, have the town administrator be authorized to submit the application to the, to the state for the advisory opinion.
For the zoning bylaw, do they have to take action?
I, I think that the planning board are the ones, it's been referred to planning board, to the extent that, I don't, I don't, actually, I should know that, and we hadn't talked to town council about this yet, but I don't know if the, if the select, if the board of selectmen needs to do that as well, or if that's a, if only planning board needs to.
To do what?
To put the, to put the, the zoning amendments themselves on the warrant.
We would, we would, we would put them on the warrant. Planning board has to hold their hearing and then make their recommendation.
Okay.
They can come from here.
So we'll have the board, as we get closer to the special town meeting, the board will basically vote the full line.
Okay.
Good, right. So what he wants us to do tonight, do you have motions for that?
So the, the first one with the master development agreement on the warrant, I think you could just make a motion to agree to put it on the warrant as, in, you know, final review prior to town meeting. You know, because some of the details may change of the master. final review prior to town meeting, you know, because some of the details may change of the master development agreement. But if you just make a motion to.
So I will make that motion that we have the develop, the master agreement, the master development agreement as a warrant article on December's town meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number two. Do you have, I'm not sure, I I wasn't really following exactly what you want us to do. So do we have some language that we can?
Yes, so I think that the the motion would be to authorize the town administrator to submit an application to the executive office of housing and livable communities.
Okay.
For an advisory opinion. And I apologize, these weren't provided in the message.
Pam, did you get that? All right, so I'll make that motion also.
Yep, for an advisory opinion under 40A, section five.
Submit the application to the executive office of housing and livable.
Second to what he said.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous, all right. Then the third thing is.
And then the last one was to make a request of the planning board that they determine this is an eligible location for purposes of their consideration of the bylaw amendments.
Okay. So that we're just asking them to do something?
Yes.
So I'll make that motion also, but you have it all. We'll do that in the form of a letter.
I can second that too.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous.
All right.
Three for three, good.
Thank you. Thank you. Lloyd, anything else?
I think we should get out.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Michael Johnson?
Yep.
I'm not sure.
Mr. Johnson here? Mr. Johnson here? We can, we're a little bit late, we can take you on your.
Just a tad. Just an hour or so.
That's fine.
So it's for two one-day licenses for the farm at Ravenbrook, November 26th and November 24th.
And these have all been reviewed by the police, fire, health, and agents, everybody?
Correct.
Is anyone on the board of any questions?
No. It's going to be similar to the event that they had last year, I would assume, which was, I thought, an excellent event, so I'm excited, excited to support it.
We're excited to be here. We've done similar events and it's always a good time. Why don't you give us just a brief explanation? You're on TV and this is an advertising opportunity as they, as my friend Jonathan.
That's it. Some good PR right now.
So myself and five of Oldbury 44 in Clog in Massachusetts. We opened up about two and a half years ago. We're very community focused and we do similar events like this where we set up a station and provide alcohol beverages. For this particular event, we plan on offering our pumpkin beer, a Fethrasan IPA, a seltzer, and also a little wine as well. So something warm, you know, good for the Christmas tree shopping and all that, so, yeah.
Okay, and these are two separate events on two separate days at the same location?
Correct.
All right, and the location will be where?
The Ravenbrook Tree Farm.
Okay, good. Again, it's advertising, I'll talk. All right, anybody on the board of any other questions?
No, excited.
So I'll make the motion that we approve. We approve the license for a one-day alcohol to Mr. Johnson on November 26th, 2023.
Second, and there's another day as well, right?
I'll do one of the.
Okay, sure, yes, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, all right. And I'll make a second motion that we approve a one-day beer and wine license at the farm at Ravenbrook, again to Mr. Johnson for November 24th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Very luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so we can now go on to, let's see, I guess we'll go right up to the approval of minutes.
Approval of selectments regular session September 26th, 2023.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Move to affirm and approve falling warrants commitments withholding warrant number 33 for $159,196.26. Vendor warrant number 34 for $102,266.63. Ambulance commitment from 10/223 to 10/823 for $22,017.82. Ambulance commitment from 10/923 to 10/1523 for $33,106.6.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Move to approve the falling warrant payroll warrant number 35 for $453,186.13. Withholding warrant number 36 for $157,592.80. Vendor warrant number 37 for $145,241.54.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, okay. I know we have a finance committee here, I don't want to keep you guys too late, but we've got a few things we can go through and then we have the rest of the night to talk about, all right? We have a couple of road opening requests.
Just one road opening.
Oh, okay, 63 Plymouth Street.
So this is a four-by-six cut in the road for gas maintenance from Eversource. It's been signed off by everybody. There is some stipulations from the highway surveyor and the police chief's requiring two detail officers.
We have a, I'll make that motion, you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the road open? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Ambulance abatement. Well, we have a request from the fire department for abatements for September 2023,
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a request here for the, from the Boy Scouts, Troop 39. They would like to use the Town Green on December 2nd from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM for the bottle drive. What is Halifax and holidays in Halifax scheduled this year?
Uh, the night.
The night, yeah. Okay, do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. We have an application here from Janice Hayward, who wants to be on cable TV?
Cable advisory.
Cable advisory, so the cable, cable TV advisory committee. I think we all know Mrs. Hayward.
Yep.
So do we have a motion to appoint, what is her term, Pam?
It's going to be June 30th, 2024.
Okay, so this, her term will expire this June.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Janice Hayward to the cable advisory committee running through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, okay. Request for proposals, energy manager consultant, is this going to be the one?
I shouldn't. So this is comes as a result, you know, there's, we have several energy efficiency grants, one of them being the Green Communities Grant. There's also several opportunities out there for further energy grants. But you really need, in order to be effective with these, you need somebody to oversee the projects for you and know, you know, who to contact and what vendors to work with and just the grants. And there's several incentive applications with the utilities. So what a lot of larger communities are doing is they're creating an actual energy manager position. You know, Halifax isn't in that position, but it would be beneficial to potentially look at bringing on a consultant to help us with this. As part of the Green Communities Grant, we can use part of that funding to fund a consultant. And then we could, you know, we would look to add part of this to the operating budget for next year. But this is simply just the procurement to see what we would get in for proposals for an energy manager to oversee those projects. I think it would pay for itself probably within a month or two. But just having this person on board is we would be able to expand into more grant projects because we'd have that person to oversee them.
Is this proposal going to cost us anything or no?
This itself is just a request, the procurement, to see what we would get for proposals.
Discussion from the board or?
Yeah, I don't think it hurts to kick the tires on it. Again, we're not committed to any sort of monies. And to Cody's point, if we do this right, I think it could pay for itself and then some. So why, doesn't hurt to try.
All right, so we have a motion to submit the request for proposal?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, okay. So the next two things is open a special town meeting warrant and also select us an alternate date. I think we should just pick the alternate date first.
Yeah, that's fine. So the alternate date comes as a request from DASI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So one of the items on the warrant this year in the special town meeting will be the updated regional agreement. And when we gave them the date of December 14th, they asked us what our alternate date was and we had not selected an alternate date. So so we put the 18th or 19th. In speaking with the moderator, he is available both nights, but he would prefer the 19th.
19th is a Tuesday night.
It's a Tuesday night, yeah.
Yep, and we don't have a meeting.
We should.
We should, actually.
Yeah, I mean, if we can move around. We could always have a meeting beforehand if there's urgent business.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we have as an alternative. Before I make that motion, why would we need an alternate date? Just because?
If we didn't have a quorum or if there was weather.
From New England? No, drive-throughs. The whole active god thing.
Okay, so I'll make a motion with December 19th as the alternative for the special town meeting that's to be held in December.
I will second and hope we don't need it.
Just as a, as a point of reference, I think, I think the urgency for this, which is, it's an unusual event to do this, but is the fact that the Silver Lake School District needs to amend their agreement. Otherwise, if they don't by the first of the year, they're going to have a real big problem with the eligibility.
Correct.
So.
Yep.
So we need to make sure it gets done.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, all right. Now, open special town meeting, we just need a motion to do that, right? And what do you want to close?
I'll post all that information on the website and have it for your next meeting. But we'll we'll let people know. If anyone wants to submit a petitioned article for a special town meeting, we'll put that information in. Special town meetings do require 100 signatures from residents versus the 10 for an annual town meeting.
All right, but otherwise, we can take any other things from like old departments and certainly our our development agreement.
Whatever the board of selectmen choose.
And we can open it open-ended like that? We don't have to have a closing date?
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to open the special town meeting warrant as of today.
Second.
Any further discussion? In favor say aye.
Aye.
All our dates we can save for later. And we can jump now to the finance committee who have patiently been waiting for 45 minutes for their turn. Thank you for that.
So if you want to open your meeting, Tom?
Yeah, so I want to open the finance committee meeting to order at 7:00 or 4:00 PM. Jointly, board of selectmen, the staff, we're discussing the fiscal year 25 budget process.
Ready to roll? Sure, so as part of the budget process, typically, the finance committee and board of selectmen have a joint meeting to kick off that process. It also determines priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. I've gone over this with the finance committee, but in your packets, you, both of the boards should have the draft budget memo that Sandy Nolan and I have put together. We're proposing to do things a little bit differently this year than has been done in the past in Halifax. But basically, to to go over it, A, we're doing it earlier this year. So this typically goes out a little bit later. But we really want to give departments the opportunity to review their budgets, review their operations, and also time to review it with myself, Sandy, and the finance committee liaisons, and then the finance committee. And also get it done in a timely fashion so we're not kind of scattering at the end as we get closer to having the warrant finalized. So what you'll see here are a few points. One of them being, we're asking departments to level service their budgets. So basically, you know, continue to provide the same level of services with only increases where they're needed to continue providing that level of service. As an exercise, we're asking departments to provide us with an allocation. If they had to do a 10% cut in their budget, where would they allocate that 10% cut? And what would their impacts be on on the on their operation? The point of that being, you know, we have pretty solid fiscal health going into fiscal 25, but there's a lot of economic uncertainty, you know, as you know, just locally, but also throughout the world with the war in Ukraine and the recent unrest in the Middle East. So, you know, and the economists have been predicting a recession for some time now. Obviously, COVID stalled that, but we have high inflation. So we want to be prepared, and we want department heads to go through the exercise of if we have to do this in the future, you know, you know where you're going to pull it from. And also be able to demonstrate to the finance committee, the board of selectmen, what, you know, how much of an impact it would have on your department. And then we are also asking departments to provide some data and metrics on the impact to services, like I just mentioned. And then one other thing is any retirees that they know of over in fiscal 25. That way, there we can budget appropriately for any payouts of benefits that we would have to provide in the year. As far as process goes, this is where things are changing a bit that we're recommending. So historically, you know, Sandy would send out the budget sheets to departments. They would fill out those budget sheets, send it back. Liaisons would, from the finance committee, would meet with departments, go over their budget. It would get submitted to the finance committee. Finance committee would meet on it as a whole and then toward the end, vote on a budget. And then it comes to you in the form of warrant, in the warrant. What we're proposing this year is a little bit of a more collaborative process. So budgets would go out, budget sheets would go out. They'd be due back to myself and Sandy December 15th. We would work with liaisons for each of the departments and we would schedule joint meetings, basically. Myself, Sandy, the finance committee liaison, and the department head to go over their budgets and really refine those. And the goal of this is, you know, Sandy and I really have a high-level view, overview of of the town. And, you know, we're always looking at financial projections, revenue projections. So we're able to give kind of that insight of how this affects, you know, maybe this department or that department. So when it gets to the finance committee, to the full finance committee, it can just go a little bit more efficiently and really have a more refined budget by the time it gets there. And then what we'll look to do is, prior to actually maybe finalizing the budget, we'll have another joint meeting like this where the finance committee can share their recommended budget with the full board of selectmen and then go from there.
I think we should probably schedule that meeting now, right? Because we know we have to have everything done by a certain date in spring. So it probably makes sense to put it on the calendar now so we all know what the target's going to be.
Sure.
All right, anybody on the board of selection have any comments?
No, I think it's a great idea. I think, I think more eyes don't hurt, you know, and I think it, I think the process, I've only been through the process, you know, limited time myself, but it always appeared to me like we had people working on puzzles in different rooms instead of working on the puzzle together. So I kind of like the idea of, of instead of working on their part and then having to backtrack when we get, you know, this doesn't work, let's all collaborate and figure it out. It seems like it would streamline things. But I am anxious to hear what the finance committee thinks is what this approach would be.
Yeah, I think it's overall the same process and we still have the liaisons working with the department heads. The only difference is Cody and Sandy are going to be embedded into that forefront. We still want to have a wider finance committee session. So the liaisons and the department heads will, and Cody and Sandy will have their meeting and then we'll bring it back collectively to the finance committee as a whole still. And then one additional piece being, as Cody mentioned, having this joint session again, again, to kind of just close it all.
Sure.
You know, so I think it's a fantastic idea, you know, Cody obviously has done a lot of work and put this plan together and it's definitely a fantastic improvement over, you know, past years. So very much in favor, in support of of the proposed plan. So I don't know if anyone else had any comments or thoughts or?
Because it did seem like in years past, you'd get down the road a ways and they go, oh, wait a minute. oh, wait a minute, and then have to, and then have to go back, you know? It seemed like you guys would go far and then this would kind of revert you back, so maybe this will eliminate some of that.
It does, yeah, and having a secondary budget upfront in hand is going to be beneficial because you do get to that point where you kind of get tight with the budget and then you have to kind of figure out how to peel it back a little, so having that, you know, the address upfront can be, you know, secondary valuable and make it more efficient, so.
And I love the 10% idea because, you know, man plans and God laughs, right? So we can have our budget, what we think is going to be our budget and you never know what's going to happen.
Yeah.
So we need a, we need a what-if scenario and I think that's fantastic.
And I like the idea, we're at this for extensive information on why you feel you need this or where did this go or why are you going to need this, you know, next year if you didn't need it last year, let's go. I like that.
More information.
Maybe more information.
Sure.
And this will provide it.
Okay.
Can we ask for a little back? The department heads to review what they did last year versus what the results were?
Yeah, it's a good, it's actually a very good point, Jim. In my previous screening, we implemented that and it was eye-opening, so we can certainly add that to the budget memo if it's, if everyone's in favor of it.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts or comments? Do you want us to make a motion to send this out or?
So it'd be, yeah, it'd be good if both boards could make a motion to approve the budget memo with the amendment, as Jim mentioned, of requesting departments to provide, you know, historical accomplishments. And we, it may be even a good idea to request that they provide some accomplishments that they hope to, or some tasks they hope to accomplish in the next fiscal year too.
One other question, so it's a way, so we will pick with them separately?
We'll have a collaborative meeting.
Okay.
And we'll set those meetings up once, so the plan is as long as the budget memo is approved tonight, we'll get this out tomorrow and then we can start working to set those meetings up with all of you and the department heads.
Okay.
Do we think that, do we think that a proposal needs a date as far as a follow-up meeting or just keep that, the proposed date separate as far as, for our follow-up meeting to?
Joint meeting?
Yeah, or try and a follow-up, joint meeting after.
March, I guess, right?
Do we, I just didn't know if we want to incorporate that date into, into our motion or keep it separate?
I mean, it's pretty far up. Yeah, I don't think you need it in the motion, but we can still get scheduling something.
I think, I'll just ask Cody, it just occurred to me while I'm talking about it, that we probably should set a date, but we'll ask him to take a look at the schedule and work with them. On a joint date, it'd probably be like, like the beginning of March, I suppose.
First week of March, we're interested.
Yeah, it gets, it gets challenging.
Deadlines always force people to get things done.
Amen. One of the challenges that we have is, you know, we, we've, we're certainly tightening up our schedule in our process and it'll help significantly. The schools are a concern, so, you know, we're hoping to work with them more collaboratively this budget cycle to get those numbers a little bit sooner than last year, but that obviously with such a large portion of our budget, it can be difficult, so I think we can maybe eye a date and then as we get closer, nail something down.
You just, I think we should have a target, that's why.
Yeah.
The other part of it is the revenue side, I mean, we're always at the, at the mercy of the state legislature in terms of local aid and all of that kind of thing, we sometimes end up until July.
Yeah, I mean, best practice, we've historically just been using last year's because it's more conservative and we want to be on the conservative side for revenues, but we've implemented, you know, financial forecasting and trends analysis in the past year, which, you know, should help in this process as well.
So I've heard of a date before the follow-up meeting, I just want to back that up, so if we have to have this done by the beginning of March, we might want to back in February just because, you know, with weather and whatnot, assuming it has to be an emergency to be finalized. So I think if we look at the beginning of March and that, that's when it needs to be done, you know, sort of tighten our hands a little bit.
My question, Cody, to you is, you and Sandy expecting mid-December to get those numbers back from departments for budgets? When do you expect to give it to us?
I mean, we'll turn them around rather quickly, you know, once we, once we receive them within the next week or so, you know, we'll look, what we'll do is we'll send out, we'll schedule meetings and then with those meetings, we'll send you copies of the budgets.
Yeah, because I like the, no, I guess when they come in, we'll save them to the one drive there.
Yeah, we'll save them on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll have access to them, I mean, almost immediately once we receive it.
So we'll put everything back on the one drive again like last year?
I think it worked, as long as you guys think it worked, I.
And they feel so like they weren't in some last room.
Yeah, I'll work with you guys, Sandy, between Sandy and I, we'll schedule, we'll get everything scheduled.
I think Mr. Nolan has something, he's way in the back there.
Yeah, there's always riffraff in the back of the room, that's how it is.
There's this spreadsheet that I do every year. That I will keep up to date as the submissions come in, you know, we'll put it on the one drive and just keep updating on the one drive. Also, as the budget submissions come in, we'll put those on the one drive, so you'll be able to access them anytime because you all got access to that one drive.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? So I'll take a motion from the board of selectmen to approve the draft letter for, written by Mr. Haddad.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I make a motion to approve the draft letter submitted by Cody.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Picture they're off and running.
And welcome, I haven't said welcome yet to Bill and Ed, so welcome to the whole process, good to see you guys.
Two brand-new rookies, I know. Get to the bench, right?
It's nice to see such a full finance committee here, it's awesome.
My instinct is it's just, it's a thankless job, no question about it, but a very important job and actually it's the best place to learn anything about the town is to be on the finance committee because everybody has to talk to you, whether they want to or not, they have to.
Many hands make light work, right?
True.
So thank you for your work, it's wonderful. Okay.
Do you guys want to adjourn?
You can adjourn if you like.
Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting at 7:17 p.m., so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Sorry for keeping you late, but.
I know.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
See you.
Thank you.
Pick up on our schedule so we have updates on the MBTA, the Morse Brothers and so on.
So the MBTA action plan, I've spoken about working with the consultant, I had a meeting with him earlier this week and he is going to actually plan to come into the next zoning bylaw review committee meeting, so on the?
Next week?
No, because next week's Halloween, so we took that one off, so it's, I think it's the, it's the 14th, I think. I'll, I'll send out an email, but he will be at that to go over some potential recommendations for where the town could put down zoning and just give a little overview of what the 3A zoning is. Morse Brothers, so we received their application, the public hearing is scheduled for November 6th to review that application. All that information has been sent out to our departments and our peer review engineer that is working on reviewing it on behalf of the town.
Yes, thank you.
And training for boards and committees, I have no new updates. And the only update I have is the town will be holding a flu vaccine clinic tomorrow. It will be here from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. All are welcome, no residency requirement, anyone nine years or older can receive the vaccine. There is a consent form, you can either download it on our website ahead of time or you can fill it out when you get here. If you have health insurance, please bring your health insurance card as most insurances will cover the flu vaccine. If you do not have health insurance, it will be $65 per vaccine, cash or check only. They'll also be providing the Pfizer COVID boosters and a limited amount of the Moderna COVID boosters, and that's tomorrow, the 25th, here at Town Hall, 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Anything else to come before?
No, there is a full one.
We have a motion to adjourn?
I will gladly entertain and make a motion to adjourn.
Could I speak to the board?
On what topic?
Performance of the board in the open meeting.
Well.
It's not usually anticipated 48 hours in advance, so we could discuss it. I think it comes 1300 miles to 10 degrees.
It wasn't anticipated, so it's your decision.
It's not a person.
It's your decision because it wasn't anticipated in 40 hours in advance, so if you want, I thought it could.
Well, I mean, it's on our agenda, so.
It's a review, it's a review, beneficial for you to let me get my statement. As I said, it wasn't previously anticipated, it was not recently anticipated by you that I would be here, so you can't trust anything that's not recently anticipated by the statements 48 hours in advance if it's not on the agenda, which I realize is not on the agenda, and I would like to make a statement to, for especially after I've screened it.
Okay, well, I'll let you, I mean, we're not going to be able to debate it or anything, but if you have a relatively short.
Yeah, if you last three minutes.
If you take the microphone, tell us who you are.
For those who do not know who I am, my name is Patrick Higgins from Northport, Alabama. I know that the board voted a while ago to ask the Attorney General's Office to go into mediation. I know that the Division of Open Government doesn't do that anymore, even though it's required by state law. I want to say that since January, when Cody came in and since John and, I don't know the other gentleman's name.
Najah.
Najah have come in, you guys have, have come a long way with compliance with the open meeting law, has, as has the finance committee. It's a shame that the chairman has already left. You guys have basically taken all the suggestions I've made and implemented it. For example, one thing is road openings. You guys list them on the agenda. The transparency and compliance with your boards has come a long way, so I just wanted to say to you that you're doing a good job and you haven't seen any in a while because you're doing a good job. Cody and I have reached out a couple of times on some issues and Cody's doing a great job. I knew Cody's, I didn't know him personally, but I knew of his performance in Dartmouth when he was Assistant Town Administrator, working with Sean, and that's why I was amazed that there was some compliance issues when he got here, because he was very familiar with the open meeting law because of a guy from the openteminglawenforcer.com. So like I said, I wanted to give you guys a compliment, keep up the good work. I don't see anything coming down the pike, but I don't think there's a need for mediation because I think we're all on the same page, so, once again, as I said to you, Mr. Chairman, it was going to be a positive statement and I think we're in good shape, so thank you for listening to me and I did want to get here and formally introduce myself to the four of you, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for that compliment.